And we'll receive a presentation on the state of California Department of Housing and Community Development comments on the six cycle housing element. Draft and consider revisions. I also note that it goes to action items in this loss. By turn, the business.
Thank you, Commissioner. City Quirky, for your company to do that. And my name is Denise Staffy as the planning consultant for the housing element. What we're here for tonight is a presentation. Regarding the six cycle housing element. And the purpose of tonight's hearing from my standpoint is really to provide an update as to what the. Housing and Community Development Department of Comments were on the draft housing element. Provide some of the updates that we're looking for in terms of programs and revisions to programs that they talked about. Give us that important how we're working on that. And we have been comments and we can hear from the public. We can also hopefully accomplish that. And we also have a like coming meeting with the city council to do much of the same thing. So tonight's. Good news is we got the 90 day review period over for the six cycle housing element and our letter wasn't thirty pages, so that's great. We're going to talk about the back and weather by programs as well as as an overview of the results of the 90 year review. Hopefully get some comments if you have any and talk about next steps. This is specifically regarding our. You know, allocation, the regional housing need allocation of one hundred eighty four units for six cycle. And I think nobody just talked about this cycle, but really we're talking about combined two hundred seventy units. It's a the shortfall from this eighty six units on this fifth cycle and fourth cycle and the hundred eighty four units. We're along in the process. This is the since March, uh, March sixteenth or actually March twenty eighth, and we get started on the sixth cycle. Zoomed along, let me say, we've moved forward. We've the uponage our community profile, housing needs and resources, housing sites, opportunities, housing constraints. Review of the last housing element, permanently fair housing analysis. And providing the goals, objectives and policies as well as community engagement. So each of those items are within the thousand elements and. We have from a timeline standpoint, started from early March. Through approval of the contract at the end of March, working through public workshops, a number of them. Tribal consultation. Looking at. The fifth cycle, sorry, the fourth, fourth of this cycle shortfall, looking at sites inventory. Specifically what's important in terms of all these different meeting dates and reviews. A robust, robust. Robust public outreach, a number of different areas. I know you've seen me here many, many times. And a lot of interaction from public comments. From particularly from the planning commission and the councils. I think that's great. Are. But I think a key element here is at the, at the time that we, there's a few versions of a housing element. We provided the local housing element and developed that in May. Or published it in May after a number of public hearings, grading programs, and that's a thirty day review period that you can see here. During that period and shortly thereafter, after the public required thirty day review under AB twenty fifteen. We met with the HCD. There's field trip with that was conducted about the sites inventory and about the housing element. We had calls with them. We completed the required thirty day public review period. We had a planning commission hearing talking about revisions to public comments. We made those revisions after rapid forth in terms of changes and you probably will recall. And published the HCD review draft on the city website for the required ten days prior, uh, for AB fifteen prior to submitting it to HCD. And once we submitted to HCD, they had their required ninety day review period. We just got the comments back. During that period of time, in addition to everything else going on, we had the airport line use commissions. That was here consistency determination, completed the rezoning, completed the EIR and the review period. And also we were able to receive comments on the eight, the six cycle and are now talking about what changes are we made to them and and those revisions. Um, this was over, there was a requirement post thirty day review period of the May to June version to have the. Make sure we consider public comments enough. Meeting going to review, but we completed that for AB fifteen to fifteen. The thirty day review is completed. We had two public comment letters received during the thirty day review for the May version, which was good. It's definitely July twelfth meeting and at different meetings in August and September. Revision for completed for HCD review draft. And we're able to actually submit on July twentieth and for the start of the ninety day review. So now where we are, the comment letter, interestingly enough, was received on October eighteenth. Same day we came at a. A meeting for planning, which is the city council of the cycle. We held a meeting with HCD shortly thereafter and were able to talk through their comments and provide some clarity to them. And they provided some clarification to us. Their comment topics related here. It's really related, a number of comments related to special needs, ensuring that the city has adequate programs for the special needs. So. And and the housing element itself, you'll notice the, talking about the different. The documents that are logistics, if you will, of the, of the housing, but where the city is, you know. What's your elderly population like? You have a majority of elders in the city here. The we have part two percent, I think, of the city population have some sort of disability. The number of single households, those are the special needs groups, although you don't have a homeless population here or a farm worker population. Those are the special needs groups that HCD sees. And they especially want to try and address programs and and see how, how we can address. Uh, the needs of those through programs and implementation and what have you been doing and what will we do to to address those. The large part of some of their comments was about affirmatively for a very fair housing. I think one of their specific comments that they talked about was tell us more about your contributing factors. What is they want to hear about? Well, which area in the city are you having a higher level of? Um, higher econ- social economic, higher education in these specific areas. Versus another so that they can produce any disparity or parity issues at the second segregation and friendly farm. Try and inform and evolve integration. The difference with this city that we've tried to explain to them is that it's a homogenous city. It's a small city. And there really isn't any disparity about different census groups. It's also really only one census. Track, it's Troy, I'm sorry, this is Troy lots of our system planning. We've worked on the firms of this river fair housing project and worked on the housing elements. So we had to explain to them that. This city may not fit within your normal elements. And I think we, John, City Manager John Burke was on the, on the call with us and I think we explained that. But they still want to see what they are used to seeing in other housing elements. So we're going to be trying to address that as we go through the changes. The other question that they had is. Go further, delve further into the constraints. They received a number of public comments and same public comments that we've seen. Related to, uh, what are your constraints? There's such a huge constraint that we wouldn't be able to actually develop. Housing in the, on the sites that were identified by the city planning commission and the city council of the city for the housing element. And sites one and one A. So we went over. That with them as well. And they asked us to explain more in the housing element on how we will overcome that in order to develop. On the areas within sites, one of the people who actually have. Any potential comment restriction. There's about a hundred days, as we know, that does. One of the other areas. So that was one of their questions on constraints and that's also responding to other comments and that we're identifying that. Although it's in the housing element, we'll provide information on that. We also have a full DIR that has. You know, a, a number of, you know, the whole analysis regarding that and then set a mitigation to address that. How HCD would like to see more specific actions and programs. That would say, how exactly are you addressing that by what timeframe? Tell us how you're doing it, what you're doing, how you're doing it and when you're doing. So that we have that, you have that program and we can track you. So that's one. They also asked for a little bit more information about the biological constraints and how we're going to mitigate those. And of course, as you know, from sort of private IR, there's a huge section on biology and a lot of history of biological and their mitigation monitoring program. Addresses those. So we'll provide the information in the housing element. We also want to identify more about the water. You know, there's specific requirements for ensuring that you have water in the building. So one of their comments was, tell us how you're going to program and. Identify what we're doing to ensure you have the infrastructure in place at the time you're going to have house. And the housing, HCD does not require you to have the infrastructure in place now, but it can be provided by the time. Your end of your eight, your, your six cycle, which is twenty twenty three. Um, and then they specify, look at some additional programs and. And then here, would you also put specific more action items as some of the programs that we have? So that's what we are talking about today. They asked specifically that we modify by applying specific action items to our. Five programs, including the Vichy zoning program, the small lot development program. Uh, the development of it includes your housing performance, which is for M B one. How to facilitate affordability, B three, and then our housing choice vouchers. Uh, they also asked that we modify the program that is basically that is program A one. Which is this, uh, how are you going to be providing, uh, the cities green, green accommodate the cities we, we shall have these stuff that we allocation. And so our, I've identified here our current program. And then. Identify the current program and then we, we just identified what revision language they like to see. So that's in the letter and we'll be providing that with a modified program A one. It's also looking to update it anyway, because there is some result we're targeting accomplished by that open reason. Um, they also asked about writing a modification of the, our ADU program. And. It's really modification of what we said we're already going to be doing, but with just a little bit of a tweak because. The program already says we'll continue to update the ADU orders to be compliant, encourage incentive waivers. Uh, provide information, providing annual staff report on the number of new ADUs are being built each year to the city council. Um, starting in nine, in twenty twenty four. And as part of review, if ADUs are not being permitted as a student, they have an element regarding the number by a certain amount of time. Take action within six months of that of the review to ensure adequacy. So that we keep up with the, with, you know, provision of ADUs because those, you know, twenty ADUs is part of our allocation of how we're, the city is supposed to be needing to bring up. Um, they added, um, suggested adding actions to ensure that. We monitored the production and affordability of ADUs, which we didn't have. And the progress made in the assumptions and inventory, but they wanted to just track that to make sure we're actually going to provide that number of ADUs that's in the. Housing element. And then they would look for a midterm review and what alternative actions we would take if not meeting the assumptions. So they provided that, that we've provided those examples at the, at the programs and the staff report that's, I think, touched with. Um, they actually also asked for something like talked about how, how, how we should be modifying the program to. Ensure availability of adequate water supply as opposed to identifying, working with. Or in addition to our program, which is working with the different jurisdiction to ensure that we have a long term water supply to meet that. The not long term housing needs of the city. They would like us to provide specific actuals, how we work with the water district for agreements on water service to ensure a form of order of sites, sites one and one A. Um, have adequate water and show the details of those actions with time. So we will be doing that or given by city manager. And. They also, I mean, specifically to the special needs group overall, you know, focusing more on the special needs group. There's some specifics in terms of, of, of revision to the ordinance, which is our group homes or D two. Um, currently they had asked that we amend the zoning ordinance and the definition of the family. And they provided an example in the staff report we provided to you. Currently, um, their comment was that we should amend definition of family to remove limitations to the number of unrelated persons. That differentiate them from related, unrelated individuals living together. I'm not sure this is correct. They may have not read the updated version of family because I don't think we actually have that. Um, definition was something that we've already contacted them and see if we get clarification. If not, we'll just amend, we'll adopt an updated program and amend the ordinance. They actually thought of an idea that we had, which is the development of large lots, considering. They, this is, this is the section where they would like to make sure we reduce constraints to develop an affordable housing. So suggesting that, uh, large lots could be a limitation. Um, to development of housing, how we would address that. This is the suggested program that we would suggest that we adopt. As a part of the, so any, any parcel over ten acres, we see the large parcel. You know, and how would we facilitate it? Oh, not that is how this, this program reflects. And then the section, uh, they ask add a program regarding SB thirty five streamlining. Um, which is basically state law and how we would address that. And so this is the suggested program, which we would recommend we just add to the housing element. And. Also, we asked for looking further into the parking requirements, our marketing requirements and the city now constraint to. Um, to provision of affordable housing. We do have a. Smaller vacant units and ideas about, uh, programs about the smaller units, perhaps we can get more affordable housing. Um, and they wanted the parking requirement, the city commensurate with the smaller taxi unit. So we're definitely adding that discussion and then adding this program. So that's sort of a synopsis of what the letter says on, on the highlights. Really what we're doing right now is just working through each of those. The first part of the letter said, providing information about what you've done since your last housing element of the cycle. So. There, you know, we were spending on that and did that section today and working with the addition constraints that I talked about. And I just working through that and providing that back to the city. Uh, to enter the HCD because they're basically going to be looking at the next version. And I'm hoping to get the next version out there. Um, I just, on next steps also for the next, you know, weeks will be kind of appearance meetings. Working with the city manager and, uh, changes to the housing element. Programs so that we're all looking at them at the same time. And then we will post that on the website. As well as we're having a meeting next week with the city council to go with whatever, like, if it's been similar things and anything that we've talked about. The city has an option, they can revise and adopt or adopt without any changes to how it's not, and send it to HCD for their next review. And obviously we're expecting that we revise it. And then make change in, and then adopt and send it to HCD. So that we can have, they know again. So, um, the city, HCD has a process of requirements. The city. They have provided us a, on a, on the draft housing element, out of the ninety day review. The city has an, uh, has an option. Not suggesting this, but the city could actually adopt the housing element, not making any changes. And some jurisdictions have done that, or the city can revise the housing and adopt and send it back to HCD saying. You know, we've made these changes per your request, your requirements, have been reviewed again. And so we'll be talking to the city manager also about. Um, you know, the approach, but our suggestion is we're not. That'll point out the idea of adopting, not making any changes. We're making the changes already. We're looking to HCD's recommendations and any comments you make about. So that we, you know, work towards submitting a compliant housing element. Most likely there'll be another review letter. As a typical and that we have the timeframe to be able to make the changes now. And put those before the, the city and the website. And then at that point, um, I think I'll tell you, but we'll find out the dates to come back to. And we can actually adopt that draft and send it to HCD for their, for their process. And they'll review it again and tell us where. Compliant or not.
Back to the commission for questions. Comments? Start with Commissioner Greer.
Thanks, please. Uh, this is why I didn't. You know, for, for understanding. So. We're trying to get all these answers by December fifteenth deadline. Is that correct? We can do that or?
We will keep having another revision of this to be able to be provided to you before the December fifteenth deadline.
Okay. If they don't. You said that, what happens if you don't make it by December fifteenth? I mean, I know there's. Very things, I mean, we're looking to remedy and election and stuff. What, what can we expect after December fifteenth if there's still I have? I'm just kind of learning what to expect, that's all.
We have a ninety days after December fifteenth to do what you need to do. They have an, and then also there's if you need to do rezoning. There's another year to three years to do that. So I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily think that you're really, you've also adopted a rezoning amidst overlay. Um, that so it depends on if you have a shortfall or not. If you have a shortfall, that we have no areas for. Uh, residential affordable housing and that could be in different category.
Okay, so that's kind of, okay. I know that's kind of where I'm going to hit ahead and, you know, I guess to me the one thing things the water has to be, you know, because. I know Marine Coast says they got the water, they can TV build in Marine Coast, it's sort of saying. Kill me, remember the water. If, uh, Stevens Valley groundwater sustainability, agency, western up wall. They know, we're waiting for the hammer to drop because we're, you know, we're all overdrafted and they come out and. They could drop a hammer on Marine Coast and, you know, we might not have that water. So if we don't have a place to build, I'm just kind of like looking at the bill of what happens. What kind of consequences, but I guess that's we can. Talk more about later. Did everybody just yet, I guess, so.
Did you, I didn't get a question in.
Oh, no, let's see, if they, if they, the water is big to me, the long, the, the long hold, yeah, because. If the, the groundwater situation changes and we. You know, haven't heard that, we haven't heard anything within the Stevens Valley groundwater sustainability agency that, we, we don't whether. They're, we're overdrafted, they're going to have to do something or it'd be like a sort of valley if the state comes in and takes it over and it's a big table. I'm going to say that could impact Marine Coast's ability to provide water. And at that point, you know, if something happens and they don't have the water. You know, we're kind of not developing. So that's, that's going to be, you were mentioning what happens if we don't have them, you know. I was just looking at contingencies of what happens. Where we, but maybe this will be, is punt down the road, you know, punt on it and worry about later, so.
So if, um. Although I don't see a real pure question.
There's not, there's not really a question for, no, that wasn't, that's a question. It was more comment, not a, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
Uh, we are putting, uh, putting it back in context with the housing element update, um, unless required for HCD. Um, we are providing more information into the document regarding both Marine Coast Water District. The settlement agreement and the Cannavale sort of letter, the, um, agreement to provide service. Um, and more information about other resources that are available, water, that are previously already there. Blended pure water, operate out of resources. So this Stevens Valley groundwater system is blended groundwater system. There's also this side offer. And other resources for the pure water, that purification system. Um, that's going to be delivered. So. I, you know, we're trying, I think the idea is to just try and provide as much information as you can, that's objective information. Whether or not water can be provided within and to these sites within the time.
In the eight years, okay, thank you. Commissioner, you guys.
I, I want to thank you because last week I asked you some questions. You gave me a lot of information. So I went in and I read the previous housing element reports and I was able to understand the different sites that were considered. And to really understand how we leaned in on that one site and what the other problems were for the other site. And today you answered my second question, which was, once we decide that we use that one site, it doesn't mean we abandon the other possibilities. Like forever.
That's correct. Okay. Actually, that brings up enough. If I can add something. We, in the environmental fact report and in your program for the housing element, you have the additional site related to the Monica's water district. Yeah, site, um, so which is outside of the service area for Marine Coast Water District. Yes, and would rely on some future water source. Hopefully could be available, um, through a future Monica's washroom project, ESOP project, if you're one of the area of.
You know, we know which other well, and if we have water problems, then everybody around us has water problems. We'll all be facing the same housing element, water issues, yeah.
That's correct. And since the nineteen nineties, every housing element in the Marine, and so that's really on water. Sources from the, you know, Calam, water, water supply system, Marine Coast, I mean, not Marine Coaster. Uh, it is having a cease and desist order. So it's been very difficult for them to show that they can provide or any jurisdiction that they can provide housing. Just why HCD pointing this jurisdiction to the site one way, one A. I mean, yeah, goal is provision of affordable housing in whatever location.
I was impressed by all systematic process that it. From my colleagues, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm wondering if you were surprised by the feedback that you got or was what you expected? I just can't believe it. My feelings. Uh, well, I have been spending a lot of time reviewing each jurisdiction. HCD letter and housing element that I could find, all really over the last year and, um, or six months. And so I was, um. There was no surprise as much as, you know, I think, you know, pointing the things that need to be done. Um, just trying to focus. Uh, it's a very similar letter to a lot of other letters, except for the other letters that we. Offered a first draft review have, could be a lot more, a lot more, um, but, um. You know, I, I, I tend not to get surprised about anything. Here, let's say, I was known as a newer review. But it was certainly a good communication with, like. To HCD representatives that we've been working with quite closely. Um, and we were able to explain some things that are giving to the city that we don't have to do certain things. Um, there, there was one item that didn't surprise me, but it's sort of different. It's, uh, in. In the world of providing for HCD, you know, we're going to be meeting arena through, um. Rehabilitation or conservation of, of different houses. And in the city, we, um, there is very little. Homes, if any, that we could find that were, were in need of rehab, that we, at such dire need so that we can count them. Yeah. And so we, um, we explained that to, to the HCD representatives and we also conducted a windshield survey, which is driving. All the streets and finding to see if you can find any, you know, house that looks like it needs to be rehabbed. We weren't able to find any. We did that back in two thousand six, so during the end of twenty twenty three, and the city is a. Very well maintained housing, you know, housing stock was, you know, like ever been getting older. I actually was surprised by it. And a little overwhelmed at the amount of work it seems you still have to do. To live is all bad, it's some of the way. That was table. The letter talks about what the requirements is and then it talks about what they were going to do. So and, and actually having that through the third, I, it would have. Yeah, yeah, because some of those things are not out. And I did feel that too. There were a lot of. And I did feel that too. There were a lot of places where they asked for analysis with very specific data that I just said to myself, how would such a little tiny town have that kind of data in order to even analyze it? It just, many cases, it just didn't make sense. But I think what you're communicating with them, that it was helpful. I, I appreciate you saying that. And um, I think in some cases for the day of the H section, um, you know, in particular, they're asking us to identify local trends and things like that. And um, uh, it is somewhat of a form, but you know, when you read some new letters, you know that each of them say very similar things. And they may not be estimated to this. Yeah. And then I think the thing that struck me as a little bit it's not odd, it's just sort of juxtapositional is that um, they're very much looking at not isolating income groups. But actually, what we're going to end up doing when we put most of the low-income housing in that one area is isolating lower income curves. Well, that was one of the first comments, I think, that we had a first public hearing about, a member of the public about we don't really want to isolate, we want to make sure the city is divided to make sure there there's, I'm making sure about them. And the excuse. Well, that's true. And there will be, but really it will end up that the majority of very low-income houses will be the same. I'm glad you're not totally overconfident and I'm ready to put your work of these here on all of these revisions. It will be um, interested in seeing how we respond, in particular around the exact intervention to other programs. They're really very much into very measurable um, types of metrics. Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's our main. There's all these programs and I'm like, how is this one city going to be able to implement? It's going to be me. Yeah. So that's, I don't know.
I just, there's a couple. There's a couple things that seem like the, there's a chapter that we've already addressed. That the rezoning effort, we did the overlay, I mean, we think that's satisfied that. Um, it was something else too. Anyways, um, you think the comments may have came after, after we drafted one?
Yeah, I think they have. I also think that they have more, they may for six, I will have four levels specificity and they want the overlay zone uh, ordinance, which is fine. And they also identify some, you know, something along the lines of um, you know, the design um, design. The design review ordinance that we have seventeen fifty six, I think, or ordinance, somewhere they talked about some language in there that needs to be changed. So our goal is to come back with some, um, if needed, just try and get some liquid cleanup on the primary ones uh, right away. If there's anything that needs to be made, the overlay zone, make that right away. Uh, change and eliminate the subjective language in seventeen fifty six um, the design review process. Uh, so that, you know, at least we're getting some of that cleaned up. Um, and we'll be, you know, talking with Karen and finding out and and you to find out if we can come back and do that, if it's possible. But um, the other was also one about the family size, uh, definition of family.
At this point, we'll go to the public comments. For the public comment, please come to the uh, so here, yeah. Yeah. Limited to three minutes, please. So this is not an action item. Um, is there any final comments or observations?
Have fun.
Thank you for all your hard work, really.
Yeah, this is, this is all I. Thank you. Okay, um, I guess when we're, now, it's your, Commissioner.
But where's this part at? We think we're in, we don't count out. Second, second, right?
Second.
I guess second. Okay. Either, I swear.
Yes, I want to apologize for arriving just right on time because I'm running in from my class at C S U and get to here. Yeah, so, um, so first comment, second, I'll be done finished with the second and give it back to you. I'll just remove the posts that I, yeah, it was really interesting because it happened on the board. He was looking when he wrote that on the border of Canada and New West. So he speaks of both systems and with different political systems and different values under it. You can tell that in fact, the whole plan he outlined, so that was for me. Um, and I also, I'm starting to catch up reading um, the planning permissions. The way it works and all the different documents, the the design guidelines and that kind of stuff, the little design guidelines that we have and all that kind of stuff. So I'm getting it, yeah.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Other, I got to know is, uh, there is a planning commissioner workshop first weekend in March, in Long Beach. So, uh, talk to the City Manager.
I think that's already been addressed to you.
Yeah.
And right, and we're going to be able to.